Erica, can you just confirm when the packet was sent? I know I saw it, but I'm only finding Monday's packets.
Um, she sent it on.
It was yesterday afternoon about three thirty. I'll double check if I have it in mind.
Okay.
Two twenty-four yesterday afternoon it came out. Do you want me to send it to you?
I guess, you got it?
Yeah.
You got it? Just reach for it.
Yeah.
Roll forward at you again.
Yeah. Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, well, it's six. Should we wait a couple more minutes or?
Yeah, give it a couple.
Give it a couple more.
A couple more minutes.
All right.
I think Ray said he's coming back from Boston or something.
All right, I'm gonna start recording.
Great, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Okay, being six o'clock on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, calling this meeting of the RMLD Board of Commissioners to order. Uh, the meeting is being audio recorded, held remotely on Zoom and livestreamed on RCTV. Uh, RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of public comment uh, on items on the official agenda. Once recognized, the chair, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. Uh, as role of the chair to maintain order in all public comment. Members participating remotely, I think we have Pam?
Yes, I'm here.
Anybody else remote at this point?
Uh, no.
We're expecting Bob, but not yet. Okay.
We do have one member of the public in, uh.
Okay, great. So, do you want to call?
Yep. So we called the cab meeting to order.
Okay, do we have any liaisons to the boards here? I don't think we do.
Me.
Uh, Ray, please?
So, um, I, I will probably be reporting out under layers on under three different topics on a regular basis right now.
Sounds good.
Um, but on the Killam School Building Project, my report out is that they were reviewing the total project budget for the Killam School. And, you know, they made a few decisions as to what the fa- facilities and infrastructure is going to be like, what the layout is going to be like, and they're narrowing in on many of the costs. And one of the things that was still outstanding was whether or not solar was going to be part of the basic building cost. Well, yes, there were actually two, two things were identified in the, the list of things to include or not include. And neither of the two were voted in yet. Uh, and the engineer advising the building committee said they did recommend that they do the rooftop and did not recommend they do the parking lot. And so the Killam School Building Committee accepted the recommendation and have added the rooftop solar right, um, to the basic building design. While that is an added capital cost, the cost that they're developing of that, that addition did not bring it over previous estimate they had made for the school. So there were other savings and, and there were other efficiencies that they've gained in terms of the total building cost. Um, and certain credits and offset that are, that are getting factored into all this. Um, but yes, rooftop solar is, at this point, um, in, in the building, building budget. Now, there's a, um, there'll be a review to, uh, what's the name of it? It's a, uh, value engineering type view. And, and there will be, you know, a, a chance to kind of go through and screen this all again. Um, but right now, uh, we're doing solar on the Killam School. Uh, and they will own it and, and gain the relative benefit from that and will support the pay-in and, and whatever. So that's good. Um.
Before you move, are you about to move on?
Okay.
Yes, questions?
That's awesome. So then they'll own it. Does that mean they get the little rebate from RMLD? So what's that, six hundred, six, sixty thousand?
Six hundred.
Six hundred?
Sixty thousand maximum.
Sixty thousand.
So they will get sixty thousand because they're large.
Got it. Okay, so that's.
There was one question and, and I answered it one way and I'm, I wasn't sure if I was right. If they then do the senior center and they put solar on the senior center, that would be another sixty. Yeah, that's the way I answered it. Okay. Um, okay, yes, so.
That was my question, just. I know we want to have a lot of in-territory generation and just that, that rebate is being used. Is that, would you say that rebate is being used to its fullest extent right now? I guess kind of a, I mean, it's only to the extent people are, are going into projects. This is kind of a general question for the group. Is that rebate being used?
We budgeted a X amount, but we haven't got to the budget on the residential side.
Yep.
But we keep adjusting the budget and move stuff to different parts of it. Um, the mentioned last year, Kirkwood ended up doing a fairly sizable rebate. That was the only, that was the only CNI one we actually did last year.
We, we just had a new one. It's a donut house.
Oh, yeah. What house?
Donuts.
A donut house?
Yeah.
Retail establishment.
Okay.
That would be donuts.
Yeah.
In Wilmington.
That's right. So in other words, while we wait for, I mean, there's a lot of interesting in-territory generation, but meantime, that's something that people can do right now is use this. And is that something that, that the department is, well, you know?
More promotion, yeah, more promotion would be good.
More promotion and?
Yeah. We actually met with, uh, another CNI customer last, uh, August, September, and they expressed some interest as well. So they're digesting what they want to do. And that would be a sizable system, probably bigger than, than the Kirkwood one, or pretty similar to a couple hundred KW.
We, we also have maybe five to six candidates, like sort of CNI customers where they have large buildings that the roof is structurally suitable to build solar. So we're gonna reach out to them. Either we build them or they, they wanna do it, they can do it.
Next topic.
Yeah, please.
Um, coming up in early February, the town charter committee will meet again. Uh, the town clerk has redistributed the draft uh, with the, with the current version of comments. And, um, I, I, I meant to look through it, but I was looking through it on my phone. So, so a lot of really small print and really small window. And I didn't really get through all of it, but you know, per our last vote, there's no changes to the, uh, there ought not to be any changes to the language in that for the commissioners. Um, we expect at the next meeting to hear back, have the, uh, the town council hear back from the AG's office in terms of where the, there are conflicts or not conflicts between the town charter and whatever. Um, and I will be speaking with Chris Pollard on tomorrow about guidance that he can offer. So, I mean, it's, it's my opinion that there's, there's a hybrid position where some of the things that are recommended, we, we can and should adopt, and there's some things that are recommended that I, I don't think need to be adopted because they really don't conflict with, with the one sixty-four. Um, but you need to do it or don't do it, but it is, they don't really conflict. So, um, anyways, I'll have a discussion. I'll report back how that meeting goes, when it happens, but that's, that's where we are right now in terms of that, that meeting.
Okay.
Ready for through number three?
Think so. Anybody have questions on that one?
No.
All right. So, um, in my enthusiasm for learning how to do this job, I've connected with the, uh, MLCA Municipal Light Commissioners Association.
Yep.
And, uh, to the best of my knowledge, I haven't screwed up anything that RMLD has already agreed to and is already doing in terms of funding various committees and towns. But we did have a discussion about the voluntary payments that, that RMLDs pay to, uh, the cities and towns. And I did explain how RMLDs calculation did for the purposes of showing them where monies came from, the value of using what parameter for scaling things, because dollars are influenced by certain things. Uh, KW sales are influenced by certain things and you have a little more control over one, not the other, because there's too many outside factors. So we went through that discussion. Um, good meeting. We had thirty-six commissioners. Uh, I forget how we're how many different, um, agencies that represented. Well, yeah, with thirty-six, it wouldn't be, it would be less than thirty-six because there are a couple that came from the same. So, so maybe twenty or so, uh, different agencies. Um, but they are, are looking to meet monthly. Uh, they're going to hit topics that are relevant to all of us. Uh, it is a discussion group that, um, by engaging in it, it's a way of learning the job without being in conflict with open meeting law because it is a discussion. It's not talking about RMLD policy. It is talking about the policy or the rules or the topic, so industry trade and, and rules that govern us all. Um, and we don't come into this usually with a whole lot of knowledge. So, um, things like the clean, uh, heat building program, things like, uh, in buildings, heating standards.
Um, two months ago, they did a geothermal.
Yeah, geothermal is coming up. A rate setting is coming up. So there's a lot of really good topics, um, out there that we'll, we'll be developing. And I say we, because I'm, now that I'm in it, I'm probably too foolish to, to get out of it. So, um, so good stuff there. Um, and so that, that's kind of where we are. If there are things you want to know about or find out how other people do things, uh, pass that along to me. We'll raise that as a topic and bring in some expertise and guidance and whether it's, you know, what another town is doing or, or what state policy is or whatever, uh, we are looking to, um, at least understand what's going on. That whether, we're not quite to the point where we have a political voice. Right now, it's more just understanding, um, the rules and regulations and codes and things. So, um, that's where we're at with that. So.
Just one item. On my, on my iPad here, all I have is the agenda. I don't have the package. The package is not on my, not on my iPad.
No.
It's just the agenda.
Gotta go into book, into book.
Uh, I did just, the agenda comes up for me here.
Yeah.
Keep going.
That's only, it's just uploaded?
Yeah.
Uh, so it'll be all slides?
Sure, yeah.
Right. There'll be, there'll be a lot of on-screen then today. That's all it's on. Okay. I can't do, I'll drop down. Okay.
All right, that's, that's my side hustles.
Side hustles.
Good. Thank you, Ray. We participate. They're great. Uh, thank you for doing all those things.
Great, great.
Anything else? I don't think so. Then we go on to public comment. We have one, one member of the public here.
She has not raised her hand.
Okay, does this member of the public wish to raise? No?
Okay.
No?
Okay, thank you for joining.
Okay. Um, then with that, we go on to minutes.
Okay.
Uh, Citizens Advisory Board goes first, I guess.
Yeah. So can we just get a motion first and then we can have a discussion?
I'll make a motion. We'll have the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approve the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary. We do a motion too, so we can.
Let them, let them approve it first.
Yeah.
And then I'll do the motion. If there's any kind of changes they want to make.
So actually on that, I was not here for the meeting. So, um, if there are no changes, I'm happy to vote an agreement for approval. And if there are going to be changes, I'd like to know about it before I.
Sure.
So, uh, I, I checked with Jason. Jason's fine with the meeting minutes. Tim, are you fine with the meeting?
Yeah, it's at the meeting that time.
Yeah. Okay. So, so, so before we vote, just like to know.
Sure, sure.
But I.
Because we need a quorum to what we, my vote.
Right, right.
Do you, all right, so do you want to do a motion in a second?
Actually, I mean, I think, you know, Jason's reviewed it, I've reviewed it. You know, I have no problem with it, you know? I'm willing to make the motion on my side and do the CEB have no issue if we, if we make a?
No, please go ahead. No, because, yeah, please go ahead. I, I just want to make sure they're staff.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't.
All right, so I'll make the move of the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of, of the General Manager and the esteemed Board Secretary. So that amendment I.
I'll give a second on that.
Second.
So, uh, I thought Eric did a good job and, uh, no. I don't, unless any of you have changed.
Or changes.
Yeah, so Mr. Pacino, I, great reporter, I.
And that's Galatasaray.
Okay, Talbotai. So that's four oh with one absolute.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. No, no, they took your note. Fine.
Yeah, we missed the order in a minute.
Just, just my.
Come with that.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be proper.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Totally good.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Which brings us to OPAP policy.
Okay. So this OPAP policy, um, again, this is where we have a program of, uh, reviewing every three years, the, uh, various policies are in place. Um, back in May and June of last year, we updated the policy nineteen, which, and the goal of that was to move, um, all of the responsibilities of the VOC into one document because it'll spread across thirty documents. Um, and so this change, the only change on the OPAP here, we're not changing the program, not changing the policy. The only, we're basically changing is we are removing the, uh, roles and responsibilities of the board from this policy, policy eight. Um, because they now already appear in the policy nineteen that we approved. So basically, we're just deleting them out of here because they now exist in policy nineteen, which is, so purely an administrative change. And we'll be doing this on a regular basis because we couldn't do them all in one fell swoop.
Okay. Um, it, you said every, we do this every three years, right?
We had, we're supposed to go through each policy every three years. So typically, we do one that, we're supposed to be in a habit of doing one to two policies every um, meeting.
Okay.
So we get through it all over.
Got it. Yeah. So what's the, what's the, what's the plan for other policies?
Uh, so we've got a, um, so we'll, we're gonna keep working through them.
Yep.
There are several that are, uh, that show that we need to review, like now that we should have done last fall.
Okay.
Um, and so we've got basically a spreadsheet. And, um, I don't know which ones we're gonna do for February, but we'll do probably two in February. We'll just get back in the mode of doing one to two every month. Um, we've got to get through them all. And, and part of the things that we are gonna recommend as we look at them is over thirty policies. Some of them we should probably either incorporate elsewhere or delete, that they're just, they're not really relevant, um, as they once were. But we'll make recommendations of each one individually. Um, there's just, it, it's a unwieldy number.
Like dissolved policy.
Like, like we did. We've done, we're last.
Dissolved policy.
We've got a couple of, we actually have done a couple of those in the past four or five years. There's a lot of code policies. I don't remember which ones, but we have it recorded.
Yeah.
Um, I have an email that says Bob's gonna attend remotely. I don't know. Have you, you picked him up yet?
He hasn't come in. I did reemail him the link with.
Yeah, I got the same email.
He sent, yeah, he sent to us. So this, these edits are, and so standard thing, we do a quick summary. We do the clean copy and I'll do the redline copy. So the only change here is board stuff. We're actually deleting them from here because we already moved them to policy nineteen.
Okay.
So what, it's the stuff on the red line. Okay.
Yep.
Actually, if you get into your, your iPhone, you can actually probably see the, uh.
It's also in the package. It's up on the screen.
Yeah, but I can't read that here.
Yeah.
Even with my.
So, yeah, you know, I can't read what's up on the screen either.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All true for this.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, that one's even better, but.
Sorry.
And better.
I apologize for not.
But if you're, if you're saying it literally just moves things to somewhere else, then.
Right. This, this one's purely administrative. There's no, there's no content changes to it.
Okay.
On this particular one. Other ones in the past, we've, obviously on the policy nineteen, we spent time walking through that two meetings, but this one, no.
I mean, based on what you're saying, there's not really much to think about here.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean.
This is an administrative process and it's just, um, it's just the VOC.
Okay. I mean, based on what Greg's saying, are you?
Yeah.
You guys ready to move on?
Yeah. Um, I'll move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve policy eight. Other, uh, post-employee benefits. Uh, OPEB, most prints, liability trust fund revision three as presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Second.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Yep.
Great reporter, I.
Ms. Pacino, I.
That's Galatasaray.
Four oh.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
I, I just have a comment on this, if you don't mind.
Please.
So, this, this is just a comment just for recording for the action. Okay. So, since I, I just was looking at the OPAP numbers and the liabilities for the pension and the open liability. And so if you look, if, and if you can just put up the page sixty-eight on the screen. And you'll, you'll see that year to year, there's not too much change in the OPEB net OPEB obligation, page sixty-eight.
Of the OPEB, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's the statement of net assets.
It's about, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. If you can just blow it up a little bit. Yeah. Yeah. So if you look at the net OPEB obligation doesn't change too much year to year. It goes, it changes a little bit, but there's big changes in the net pension liabilities. Okay? And I, I, I went back a few years. And there were, you know, it swings around a lot. So, I, I'm not asking for an explanation now, but in the future, at a future meeting, could, it'll be good if you can just.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, either in the February or the March one, we'll typically do a financial update.
Just a request.
Yep. And I got your text earlier, so I've got some answers now, but we'll save it for the right time.
Yeah.
Totally fine.
Because there's a big change and it's just good to be, I mean, it's a big number. It's like.
On the balance sheet.
Yeah. Thank you.
So recorded.
We'll be ready to move on to Reagan's presentations.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Got it. That's Greg's. No, she's going, yeah.
Um, I think this analysis was requested by the, and, um, a few weeks ago, so we've started the process. And we've established the method of it. I think that's the key, like just fundamentally, what are we trying to calculate? And then, you know, we'll go from there. We have some preliminary analysis done, so on, and kind of explain all that.
I didn't see her. Is it being requested by who? I didn't hear the, what you said.
Vivek.
Vivek, sorry, yeah. I didn't forget about you. And also others, I think Ray raised it, but yes, Vivek has been, uh.
No, 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 but I think.
Yeah.
Many people, I think both Ray and Dave, they were also very keen about energy efficiencies.
Yeah.
Programs.
Setting a little bit of the log group.
So the way we look at the energy efficient savings are two, kind of two layers. The first one is the underlying savings. So basically, if you look at the, the load shape of a customer, if it's like this, and then the underlying savings, if you put in more efficient equipment, the entire load should be lower, the entire shape, you know, uh, curve should be lower. So, but it, that, there are two pieces to, uh, to this underlying efficiency. One is, you know, what type of equipment you put in. Um, the other piece is, you know, how many people actually are going to convert to using more efficient equipment. So those are the two main factors we're looking into. And the other piece is the peak demand reduction or demand response savings. And those are, again, you, if you look at the curve, you're trying to shave the curve, smooth it out. That's the active, uh, demand response part of the savings. So we haven't started looking at that yet, but today I'm just gonna focus a little bit on the underlying savings for the residential sector. And for the peak demand response savings, it's the same. It's, you know, one piece is you put in the equipment, there's an embedded demand saving already. So because the saving, the energy saving, the kilowatt hour is actually stemming from the kilowatt, the power savings. So there's some embedded demand savings and then your active demand response, you, it's just on top of that additional savings. Um, then I'm gonna move on to the next one. So we did, we started with the residential sector. It's about forty percent of our load. Um, we we have to make some assumptions on, we, we basically were trying to assume that all the appliances will be more efficient. And then we're assuming eighty percent of our residential customers are going to convert. And just for context, currently with our about three million dollar energy efficiency program, we have about ten to fifteen percent of participation rate. Uh, just, just for context. And then, um.
Meaning only ten or thirty percent of customers are trying to do any, any, any piece of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any piece of it, but this assumption we're making is that they're gonna change every single thing because we're just aggregating the savings from each. I think maybe the next chart will explain a little bit more. So, if you look at.
Just go, just.
The.
Look back. Yeah. Just make sure that you understand, the model you're about to show assumes an eighty percent participation rate in the residential sector versus today, we're roughly ten to fifteen percent. So this is a, trying to get an idea of what the boundaries are.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, this is a preliminary like, uh, list. We, we look at, you know, mass saves, you know, technical resource, um, um, menu, reference menu. And we look at some of the, the consultants that work in the, in the, in the energy efficiency space. I'm trying to come up with a, we're kind of reasonable but simplified list of equipment that we're looking at. These, this is the list we have so far. We, we might refine it. If you look at the percentage in the last column, you add all those up, it's a hundred percent of a house's load. So, and then includes all these different equipment. It doesn't mean every house has all of these and, but it's just like, on average, what's a typical usage profile? And the, 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 the column next to it, to the left of it, that's, we are just applying that percentage to the total residential sector load of Reading Territory. So just to give you a sense of where the allocation of the different type of equipment usage is. Um, and I'm gonna go back here just to kind of explain the overall preliminary result we, we come up with. Um, with all those assumptions that I just explained, we think there, the conclusion is there's probably ten percent that we can achieve in terms of underlying energy savings.
In residential.
In residential sector. And then to translate that into megawatt hours, about twenty-five thousand each year. And then for comparison, that, that saving, that reduction is about four percent of our total load.
Okay, you're saying residential is forty percent. And so you're doing ten percent of that. And so four percent of the total load is, that, that, that's a number, right?
Assuming eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
That's the potential for.
That's the.
Kind of the upper bound.
Probably the maximum potential.
Uh, unless those folks are already doing those things, but they haven't actually thought to go to the RMLD program.
Oh, it doesn't, this is not, this is not considering whether they get a rebate or not. It's just pure energy savings.
Actual. But it's, it assumes that they haven't already done a lot of those things, which they might have done. And we don't, we don't know if they have already done those things, right?
Right, right. So the savings could be less, actually. Right, right. So the savings could be less, actually.
Wait. This, this assumes that they haven't done it, but that they then do do it.
Yes.
And I would, I would guess that just in the normal course of people's buying new refrigerators.
Replacing, yeah.
There, it's already happened for a lot of, I would guess.
Yep.
But so that wouldn't really be achievable, probably, right? Not that it has to be. With ten, with ten percent is it, it would be.
It, it, it's probably.
It's theoretical.
It's theoretical. It's at the high end.
Yeah.
But I think the, the key thing is.
This, this keeps, this is an estimation of the potential of such a program.
If it was all incremental and had eighty percent participation, correct and correct.
And that they hadn't already done it.
Yeah.
But just not.
Yeah, that's the example, right? Yeah, exactly right.
Well, and, well, yes, you can say that, but also our savings, like, uh, calculation is ba- based on the most recent three-year energy efficiency plan of the I O U's.
Hmm.
And that's from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. So efficiency accrues all the time.
Yeah.
You know, there's something that, so there's a little bit of offset of that. Okay. And then we put that conclusion in the graph on the left. That's what it is, like the different, the bigger category of appliances and equipment in the house. That's kind of the proportion of the, 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 the savings.
So it's, it's R C N. Other, other is the big.
Other is a big, uh, yeah.
Other is very big.
Miscellaneous, yeah. Many different little things.
E Vs would go in there.
Uh, I don't, E V is not, this is only from electric to electric.
E Vs would be incremental on top of this total load.
Yeah.
So the E- E Vs are not in the analysis right now.
Yeah, there's no like more efficient E V charger. We're not talking about that. Yeah.
All right, okay.
Uh, you have H V A C being the base, but that's.
That's, that's, yeah, that's like, if you have a electric con- air conditioner or electric heat pump, actually this is more about electric he- heat pump, eh? Then now you have a more efficient model and that's the savings that you can achieve.
So Megan, if you compare, like, there's an organization called A C E E E, right?
Mm-hmm.
Association that deals only with energy efficiency.
Yes.
So what do they say about, i- is this like a ballpark number that's consistent with what they claim? Is the potential for e- energy efficiency?
A great question. Yeah, I'll, I'll check on that. Yeah.
I, I think it does be good to check with them.
Yep.
Because you're, you're doing a model based on those kind of numbers, right?
Yes.
So you're taking mass save.
Yeah, so A, A C E, they, they are national. So they look at like across the country, like some averages or whatnot.
But they may have.
A mass save is our Massachusetts. Yeah. But, yeah, I think from the, like, the technical savings, like, for this equipment, what is more efficient? I think that, that would be another good.
Yeah, because like you have a pool pump here, like, I don't know how many people have a pool pump in Massachusetts. I mean, it's, 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 it's more like in our south, right? South and west.
Yeah. It, I mean, the, I think the goal is to go even a little bit higher level because there are so many variances from house to house.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so that's where the direction we're trying to go, like not to get into the weeds or go into the rabbit hole, like, okay, how much is it? Three percent or three, three point five percent? I don't think we can ever get to that. Yeah. But the ballpark ten percent is, I'm pretty comfortable with it, but I'll definitely check with the A C E studies. They do studies every year. Uh, so the last piece I would just kind of say is the next steps. Uh, like I said, the embedded demand savings should be the next one because we're looking at the appliances it- itself already. And then we're gonna look at the peak demand reduction. That's gonna be very interesting. Um, that will also highly depend on the, uh, participation rate. And then we'll move on from residential to the commercial and industrial sector. Um, this sector is way more complicated, just different facilities, different buildings, different equipment, different usage. Right? All the, yeah, eh, yeah, well, again, we're gonna kind of go down the rabbit hole a little bit and then come out of it and try to have some high level categories of, of, uh, energy saving potentials. That's pretty much it. I think, you know, people are interested in this topic. I think the end goal is for us to actually think about our program design, energy efficiency program design, um, how to increase participation rate. I think that's, that's probably like a key.
And actually about this, the key thing is customer engagement.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just basically customer engagement.
And, and it's a question of business model, right? Because right now, if, if it's total outreach, just if it's just a utility and a customer program. If you have, like in other cases, I know there are examples where you have third parties that, like, if you just look at mass save, mass save is an example of a third party that is helping utilities and the customers figure out, you know, energy efficiency. So if, if there's ways to use a third party, I, I, I'm not saying, you know, it's, it's, it's not a simple model, but it's worth exploring if we can use other people to help us here.
I, I, I will say that, uh, massive is a four billion dollar industry. That implies thousands of people, um, and they do have higher, generally, they do, they do have higher incentives. So for reading, for R M O D, right now we have a three million dollar uh, budget for the E program. So we need to think about, okay, with that three million, how much participation we can achieve? And if we want to reach higher, then we have to raise, increase the rates to collect more fund.
No, but, but my sense is, there are municipal utilities across the country. You have some in California also, right? So I'm sure they're also looking, I mean, California is pretty much of a leader in a lot of these, uh, programs. So it's worth seeing if there are some, if there's something we can learn from them.
I, I, I think that suggests two things. One is, you know, the stepwise program that Megan and her team have been pushed on is a good example of a third party participating, but not getting them, helping us make it happen, but not creating a barrier between us and our customer.
Exactly.
And I think the other element, um, it, you know, the, the recommendation you've, you've made in the past and you're making right now is, you know, lessons learned from other utilities. So we're very active, we're becoming more active in A P P A. Um, we're, uh, we're more active and NEPA is an example, some lessons there, but trying to learn from what other people have done from industry participants. And then an example like stepwise, third parties, as we, as we talked about last meeting, you know, there's a bunch of partners, that partnership piece is what we're trying to focus on. So other companies, um, learn lessons that they have, excuse me, lessons that they have as well. So lessons learned are gonna be important.
Well, I mean, and I want to get back to energy efficiency because when we talk about stepwise, we're talking E Vs. If we talk about Adobe, we're talking heat pumps, which are kind of two different things here.
A boat. Yeah. Well, there's a whole bunch of things, but it's just.
Well, there are a bunch of things, but we're talking about energy, home energy efficiency. And can we get savings out of that? When it only makes forty percent of our load and only ten percent participate, what value are we gonna get by reduced load if that's the rate of participation? And if many people who've bought equipment in the last, I think, a lifespan for, um, appliances now is only about ten years or twelve years.
Ten years for refrigerated.
Um, which, um, has about thirty. So, and it is hanging by a thread, but it's also not electric. So if, my.
Oh, yours. Oh, yours is, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Well, the refrigerator is, but not the, not the stove. Um, so, you know, how, how do we, which, wh- where I think they're trying to get from us, so if we can stay focused on the, the home energy efficiency. Other, how much leverage can we get? How much incentive can we provide to increase the rate of particip- participation? As well as gain some of the value in these that we have. Right? And if you used to going up rather than down, um.
Well, and I think.
Even though I have fairly efficient things.
And a- as electrification continues, there's an upward pressure. And I think the recommendation that the C A B and the B O C are making to us, and that's what we're looking at is, how can we, is there things that we can do to dampen that?
Well, I understand. And, 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 and that's the goal. And, and, and so within the framework of home energy efficiency, um, I'm going back to looking down the list of, of where that is, it, it's really just a few things. And, and I mean, we're not.
What, what, you're exactly right.
I mean, it isn't, yeah. It's, I mean.
There's no silver.
Right. Yeah, there's no.
I, I think.
Right. But I, I think, I think you have it right about customer engagement. Can we just get more participation?
Yeah, no, and I think.
I don't think, I mean, it's not, I don't see it being huge.
Yeah, no, no. And, and so, so that Megan, your analysis, you know, this is, this may not be a very big impact. But a- all I'm saying is let's just get it calibrated with, say, someone like A C E E and people from Canada, from California.
Yeah.
Just, ju- just to make sure that, you know, we're not burdening the organization, you know, chasing a bad goals.
Right, right.
But the, the idea is that, you know, I think we owe it to everyone to see what can we get from energy efficiency.
Yeah.
And.
Even as small as it is.
And I know there's a lot that people talk about it. So it's worth exploring somewhat.
Yeah, I mean, we have the two goals for this. One is to have people use more efficient electric appliances.
Mm-hmm.
But then we also have the goal of people converting from gas appliances, like gas heating, maybe a gas boiler to some electric system, which is more efficient on a carbon use basis, but not necessarily a lower electric usage.
No, it might be net more efficient. And I think a good example that you're bringing up is if we think about heating systems in particular or cooling systems, the heat pump concept.
Well, you're getting heat pumping, I, I could say a different, but let's say, let's say the hot water heater.
Hot water heater, yeah.
I mean, if, if I had a gas hot water heater, which I kind of do, I have a half gas water heater, part of it.
Correct.
Um, and I wanted to convert to electric, then the incentive ought to be to go to a heat pump water heater.
Right.
Incentivize that choice.
And maybe we've.
So that they, so that we encourage someone to get to electric heat, but also encourage someone to get to efficient electric heat. Or, or, um.
But, but I think, um, you, you, you're, I think you're, you know, your point, you're reinforcing the, the proper direction. And that is, you know, we, part of the, that you can't see on this one, but part of that, um, electric load mix is, you know, where's the big, you know, biggest to smallest load, right?
Yeah.
So H V A C is the biggest, um, other is a big one, but that's a bunch of smaller pieces. But water heating is a, is up there in terms of the top three or four depending upon how it's used. So I think what you're saying is, let's keep looking at those prioritized. And back to the vex comment is, you know, if we can increase the participation in some way or shape, it, it might not move the needle significantly, but given the fact that it's not a big needle, what can we, how can we learn from what other people have done to get that? If it works out to be a half a percent or one percent, it's still important. The question is just how do we use our resources to make that happen? I think with that same, take lessons learned.
Yeah.
And use for a party. So I, but I think the concept's good.
Good question. Um, you were, you presented several months ago about how the existing suite of offerings was a little outdated and included things that like, forget what they were, but.
Mm-hmm.
Light bulbs.
Yeah, light bulbs. And, and it was clear, and it has been clear for quite some time, that the offerings that are current are outdated.
Yeah, we, we've already changed that.
Oh, you did already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's, remind us what the changes were that you.
So we actually got rid of most of the appliance rebates. We focused on five, five piece, pe- pieces. Right now, I think it's mostly electric range, two kind of types of electric ranges, snowblowers, like just those, those appliances are not like fully developed, uh, on the market yet. So we still provide those, provide, we still provide the Christmas li- lights for them, so municipalities. And then E V chargers and.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got rid of the most.
You did, you did that already. Okay.
Yes, I did that. Yeah. Yeah.
And, well, so the other questions?
I don't know. I, I think this is good. Thanks. Uh, I think some of this can roll into goals. And I, I'd like to bring that in, in discussion.
Good, sure.
Yeah.
And. You talked, there you go. You talked about efficiency, but then peak peak response and demand, it's related, but is that a separate presentation or is that a?
Yes, we're, we're going to do that analysis and then we can report back on how much.
That wasn't meant to be for tonight.
No.
Oh, okay.
Next steps. This is the next step.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
That, that's like cost savings, but not, you know, you, you're just shifting the energy around.
Yeah.
Shifting energy use around, but you're reducing the peak and reducing costs, but not energy.
Not, not, not kilowatt hour per se.
Right. I was only looking because it said energy efficiency and peak management, but tonight was energy efficiency. Peak management will be another time.
Yes. And also just the energy efficient equipment in itself has some demand reduction potential. We want to look into that as well. Just to have that full full picture. Yeah.
And I still, just following up on something from before, how much is, what is the, what is the total budget for, for that solar rebate? For the residential.
I, I wasn't gonna mention this, um, so we have three million dollar budget right now, but that actually covers everything, cover all these energy efficiency uh, rebates, heat pump rebates and solar rebates.
Okay, three million altogether.
Yeah.
And, and how much of that guy used last year?
Uh, I.
Two, over two million.
Two, probably two over two. But we're still closing out last year a little bit.
But, but significantly under, people significantly underutilized it.
Yeah, previous year we were, were at the three million dollar mark. We used all of it. This past year, uh, didn't.
And is it, it, can that amount be filled by any of those buckets? It just depends what people use.
Well, so.
Or is it, or, or is there a certain amount reserved for each type of?
No, no, it's just the to- uh, uh, pool, unpool. But, but we are making major changes to the heat pump program.
Yep.
So that one million dollar will be quite easily spent if people really kind of.
So in other words, hypothetically, if nobody used solar, everybody bought whatever the appliances and it's three million worth, it could be three million. Conversely, if nobody did efficiency but did six hundred dollars a kilowatt, that three million could be filled up by the other thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three million and last year was only about two or a little more.
Yeah, I think more than two million. Mm-hmm.
In twenty twenty four.
Twenty, twenty three is higher, yeah.
Then why was it so significantly underutilized? If, if it was in previous years, that'd been.
Mostly the C N I sector, very little participation.
But you said in earlier years that they, it had been fully spent or nearly so.
Yeah, well, so remember over the past four years, we went from three tenths of a cent to four tenths of a cent to five cents. So we actually, we made the size of the budget higher.
Okay.
We have more dollars. So we, we were utilizing it. We're realizing that, um, as we continue the, the program forward, we're gonna, I won't say run out of cash, but we want to keep the pool larger.
Okay, so the reason that it was underutilized is because the, the budget was larger, but the actual utilization is about the same.
No, uh, so, so we have, we have to look at it. We actually.
Yeah, we, I will can report on the stats after we close out twenty twenty four. Yes.
I think, I think also it's something you're gonna hit, you're gonna hit the, uh, ceiling.
For sure.
Yeah, we also have a.
Done it year one. We're not gonna do it year two and year three.
We, we also have a cash flow issue, right? We collect the, 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 what, five, tenth of a cent each month.
Right.
Uh, so some months we act in the red because we, we send out more checks than what we collected. So that's, you know, it's a, it's a balance.
Yeah, but we're not worried about monthly numbers, right?
No, no, not really. I'm just saying, like, you know, so we, we tend to have a little bit of reserve just so that when we do need to issue.
I think to your point, David, I, I think there is an element and the vex, uh, of outreach.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, and, and I think with, with a new, um, marketing and, and, uh, and outreach director, uh, we can, we can kind of spin that.
Yes, we're definitely.
And, and do some more things in terms of outreach, but, um, but yeah, I, I, I think to your points, we're, I'm glad we're growing the pool. Um, if we're not using all the money we collect, then we should develop some incentives to do that. Um, but yes, I get that. Um, there's some things that don't provide us value or, or people are gonna be doing anyways because they see the sticker on the device, uh, the Energy Star sticker, and that's the one they're gonna get. So, um, where we can, where we can make some better cho- uh, encourage people to make some better choices. Ranges, uh, hot water heaters.
Those two.
Being, being among the, the two top.
And A C and Prince.
Yeah, and, and that.
Those are the, those are the big ones.
And, and yeah, and that, and that gets into the whole conversion from oil and gas to heat pumps. So that's, I consider that a, a.
Yeah, no, and, and I think part of my original request was not just the residential part, but the C N I piece also, because the third party players can actually be much more engaged on the C N I side. Because like, if you have like a large commercial building, people go and change out a lot of the, uh, thermostat and, you know, and you can put in more controls and it, it, that you can find some savings there.
As we said it last, yeah, Bob said it last week, bigger bang for the buck. Yes, I'm with you. Good, good recommendation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, we're gonna jump to, I think the next time the agenda is, uh, yeah, my update. Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Okay. So quick update, I usually leave this for the area yet, but we're gonna focus on goals after this. Um, so our, our multi-team, we're kind of back to your point. Um, as I think I mentioned, uh, or. Um, as I think I mentioned uh earlier this week, so uh. Under Megan's leadership and a lot of support from the HR director. Um, so we've hired in the past couple of, these are, these are recent hires in the past couple of months. But uh replaced two of the IRD, these, and all of these hires are replacing existing positions. Um, so IRD specialist, IRD analyst. Um, uh, and also part of IRD is the customer service specialist, um, uh. And then also a line worker. So each one of these are replacing somebody who has gone somewhere else.
Sorry, Greg, can I just interrupt? Is this, are are your slides in the packet somewhere? I I don't see them.
Uh, no, they're in your email package that came.
Oh, they're not even in the email.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, these aren't. No, I will, uh, so can you see our screen? They're not.
I I can't, um. I'm not sure if it's something that can be shared, but that that's fine. I'll just listen. Um, and if it could be emailed out afterwards, that'd be great.
Uh.
Yeah.
I guess she didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
My apologies. Email to the group, um, that it, the heading is there, but not the content.
Right, okay.
The content not there.
So so basically, it's just, it's two slides, Pam. The first one basically is talking about team members. Um, so in the past couple of months, uh, the team uh has focused on um filling out some of the positions. So back to some of the programs that we've been talking about that are IRD specific and Megan's team. Um, we now have individuals who are motivated, interested in these topics, so that that is starting to come into play. Um, in addition, uh, we talked before about the control room, um, uh. You know, that's a, that's a very important position in the organization. We man that twenty four seven. Um, we have an open position there. It's a challenging position. Because it is, uh, you're literally, there are eight hour shifts um in the control room. So you're looking at computer strings and answering phones, et cetera. It's a different kind of job. Um, and we, we staff it. We don't have people on call. We actually staff it. Um, back to the comment we just talked about relative to outreach. Um, so our uh uh marketing manager is hit the ground running and is uh. As a couple of guys have already commented, it's doing a good job, but we need to provide some additional horsepower behind her. So we've. Uh, and this was part of the structure that we put in place last year, but we created a marketing communication coordinator. Um, we had built that into the the budget for twenty twenty five. And then also, um. Uh, we are interviewing for a system engineer position. As you guys remember, last year, we um took one of the engineers and promoted them to be the assistant director. Um, and so that's where we are from a recent um pipeline and hire perspective. Uh, right now, in January and February, our goal is to get them all done by the end of February are the reviews um for those. So that there are certain members that actually do annual reviews, other ones they do intermediate step evaluations, but for the ones that are on views. Uh, our goal is to get those all complete by uh the end of next month. And key in office and comments that you guys made um earlier this week, right, training, communications and growth development.
That that does sound familiar.
Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Yeah. I took good notes. And and that's actually part of the program, particularly in the training and the career development. There's a, there's a thing called the career development. Um, uh, programs that have languished a little bit. We're gonna streamline them because they gotta be kind of, they became unwieldy, but.
Yeah.
It's important from particularly the new guys to say, you know, what's the progression look like? So. But I think the element for the new people coming in, and this has really been the case for a while, is there's a lot of interesting things happening here at RMLD. This is a very dynamic space. There was a time when the electric utility was not a dynamic space, but it is now. I'm looking at you, Jason. It's crazy. Um, next item uh is the email. So um I was hoping to have it done by the end of this week. Um, we're um getting some additional licenses, um, so we can roll it out to all ten. Uh, BOC and CAB, these are basically RMD email addresses. Um, I expect some community, you guys should expect some communication from um RIT director mid to late next week. And hopefully we get live by the end of next week, but I'll say we'll be fully live by um two weeks from now, February fourteenth.
So since we have Megan here, um, with with the new people into your group, uh, they're getting oriented, they're getting training, you've been working with them and they're. Understanding their jobs and everything and you're. Getting the support you need to get them through that process?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I'm very happy with the team right now.
All right.
Yeah.
And um, since we have the HR director here, uh, um. Dr. Question that way with the marketing and communications uh coordinator coming in to support our marketing communications director. Um. I I know we had a conversation, maybe you can share with the group. I'm, we're excited, I'm excited about that person and and the role. Can you talk a little bit about how that person and role has evolved and what you're looking to do with the coordinator?
So I can.
She may have just come up from the microphone.
Just.
Other control.
So just to narrate the, why I I had Greg, I saw this today and I said, put posting because. We have a process to go through whenever we change a job description, that's a union job description. So when we originally hired the marketing manager, we had to have that approved through the union and. And they did do that and being hired the marketing manager and some of the qualit- some of the qualifications and. And tasks from the communications manager job went to that marketing manager and he also elevated that role. With all of her skills that she brought to it as well. Um, there were still some things that she was doing and that she's gonna be moving away from as the communications manager or. Coordinator, should I say, we've changed his title so many times because we've been kind of looking, we actually, it was really uh incredible the way we went through the process, just to show you the professional that we hired. I went back to her and I said, geez, when I, when I submit this to the union, the best thing for me to do. Is to show them where all the tasks of the communications manager, the original position went. So Melissa went into that job description and highlighted every piece that went to the. That came from that position to her position and every piece that went to the newly created position of. Marketing communications coordinator. And we fell upon that title because we did some research to say. You know, I I've been a marketing communications person, I had a past life a little bit, Matt, so I um. I said to her, you know, I found it difficult with the job titles because when you say communications, you might get something totally different. When you say marketing, you get a lot of sales. You know, we want to have somebody that can write, that can also do a lot of the, you know, marketing driving. Uh, these programs that we, you know, intend to do at RMD. So, um. We crafted that, Megan and Melissa really crafted that job description and. Right now, I say posting because we do still have to go through a final approval. Where Greg has it on his desk now for the final approval to then go to the union. And um then the union will look at that and see that it's satisfied to have met all the things. Did I miss anything, Megan?
And the union is input is just so that they know that. Those skills are there, that the staffing, I mean, they mainly are interested to make sure they're not losing staff.
Right.
So that, so that the skills are still being supported and that they're still getting staff to cover that, that they're not losing.
Not, not losing the work itself as well, you know?
Yeah.
Because they do want to retain that the work that is covered under their contract and and I think that's important so that nothing gets outsourced without, you know, that.
Just, just to clarify, so, um. You know, we have three unions, the majority of people are member of a unions, but um our focus as a group, as a team. Is to focus on serving the customers. So while they are a participant, they're, they're intended to be a partner of us.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not our audience there.
No, no, I understand. And 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 I, I just, my own clarification, just, they. I'm still learning.
There's a contractual.
I'm still, I'm still learning.
That's all good. And this is, this is why I just want to make sure people understand.
Yeah.
We talked about the union stuff because it, it here, um, it's, it's a partnership. It's not, it's not an antagonist.
Yeah, no, and and that's what I'm hearing, that you're, you're engaging them so that they understand that the. The work is still in house and they're just providing, who's, who's doing.
Absolutely.
But our, our real focus is, is again, back to the, by having the structure, is to get the outreach to the customers back to. What, you know, for Beck and Dave and you have prompting all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
And feedback's been incredible with Melissa joining because she hit the ground running with our event right out of the gate, Power, Power Week. And um she engaged the full community of people here to work with her, including myself and others. And um it, we met weekly, we had tasks, we all chipped in and everybody really developed a relationship with her very, very quickly. So I think, I think the, the whole unit here is real, really pleased that we went with that marketing manager.
So, so the main intent of adding another person is because Melissa has a lot of. Capability that she doesn't have time to u- utilize yet. So she was on the ground running all these programs that were kind of halted because of all the changes. But now we're ready to like for her to actually be the marketing manager, to be more strategic and planning and and all the bigger things. And we're also engaging more with legislators, regulatory agencies and all that. That's gonna be in her house. Then this person will really support her to be on the ground and doing all these.
Local community engagement.
Right, good.
Yeah.
Um, in, in the, jumping on the theme of local community engagement. Um, I, my past life is, I'm an advisory committee member. I did talk with, with them. And uh so in local community engagement, um. I would encourage um. The coordinator or or Megan, I mean, uh, Melissa, Melissa, to touch base with them so that they can. If a message wants to come from us out to the community, work through them, if they can echo the message. Um, I mean, there's some other community groups too, but at least certainly. Um, and and join one of their meetings and say, here's the programs that we're talking about to the community. Whatever of the different things that she wants to talk, maybe there's an event coming up, she wants to just. I encourage uh her to talk um to that group. Um, as I spoke with them recently, they. Um, they thought that was a, a good, good thing, good connection to make. Um, and yeah, my, my brief interaction with her, she's, she's awesome. So, um.
Yeah.
Collect DNA, start growing it because we're.
That's a, that's a strategy I haven't thought of yet.
That's a long term strategy. It takes a little while to get that, but. Yeah, she's, she's incredible.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you. Thank you both. Um. Projects, just a quick update on some key projects. Um, we talked about these at the end of last year, but on storage systems. You guys all know, starting in twenty seventeen, we have a five megawatt um. Two hour system in station three. Um, and over the past year and a half, we've been working to add a total of twenty megawatts and another four. Five megawatt systems. Um, two of them are going to River Park. It's actually. Uh, there's equipment on the ground as we speak. The goal is to get those commissioned by March. Um, there'll be another ten megawatts added to station three. Um, the, uh, that's with a different vendor. Both of those systems are back to the concept of partnerships. They're with partners. Um, there was a very involved process and they have a lot of engineering work that goes into those. Um, including um ISO New England, ISO New England put in place uh. Requirements to do with known as level three studies. So the first of those four. Systems, the first five of those four systems, one of the River Park ones went through a level uh zero, but the other three went through. Uh, level three studies. Um, so we had external support to get the applications done, et cetera. At the uh January twenty second meeting, uh, the rest of the three systems got their ISO approval. So. We basically have all the approvals required for those. Um, you guys have heard of Alstom. Uh, we actually have a joint grant application with them. Um, actually, there's two of us. There's Burbank, California and Ready, Massachusetts. Uh, partnered with Alstom for our grant application. That's a different chemistry. Um, and that's a longer duration. It's a roughly, it's tended to be roughly a ten hour system. Um, and then you guys know that we continue to work on the form. Um, that's a hundred hour system. Um, we know later than, uh, I say no later, by May of twenty twenty five. Um, we want to come back to you with a lot more details in terms of next steps for those. That particular form one, as I had mentioned to you um late last, I, I guess it was. I guess it was just on Monday, but there's a three million dollar grant out of the nine point three million dollars that the state of Massachusetts was awarded, their allocation. They basically are awarding it to us and they sent their recommendation back to DOE. So, um, obviously. Yeah, that's predicated on us actually doing the project, but that continues to move forward as well. Uh, the other two big projects, just real quick snapshot and we'll, um, as they get a little further down the road, we'll, every third probably. Uh, uh, meeting, we'll do a quick update um with the project managers working on those, but the AMI update. We expect to execute the contract in the next couple of weeks, by the end of February, but next couple of weeks. Um, the team working on the initial um order, it's about thirty three thousand meters, just to give you guys an idea of order of magnitude. Um, the intention is to have all of those, well, the first six hundred to uh be installed by. Um, early fall, September of twenty twenty five, and then the balance of those to be installed. Ideally in a six month period, maybe six to nine months in the first portion of twenty twenty five, but all of it to be fully commissioned. Um, ideally in uh twenty twenty six, but early twenty seven latest. Um, that's a prerequisite to some other projects that we're working on as well, which we'll talk about later relative to uh internal platforms. And then station six update, um transformers um that we ordered literally a year and a half ago. Um, they were finished a bit early, um, back in uh November and December. There's two of them. Um, they are supposed to uh be delivered in February. Um, we'll end up putting those in station four while we finish the prep of station six. Um, there's quite a bit of activity happening now, so we'll start breaking pictures. By the way, that picture on the screen. Is the River Park station, so you can see that's a week ago. So there's actually equipment that's being placed already in the River Park system. But relative to uh station six, um, uh, probably the key. It it's gonna be a late twenty six, early twenty seven um full commissioning. Um, we're connecting to National Grid's um one fifteen KV network. They've got to do some power, they're doing some grid. Tower, uh, transmission grid tower work in that area on their three forty five KV lines. Um, so they're, they're, it's gonna be probably a twenty twenty six event by the time they're ready, but hopefully by that point in time. All of our build will be done, ready to connect once that's done. So those projects, the AMI and the substation six. You'll hear more and more about them, but they're now very visible projects. Quick, that's a quick update for uh GM updates. Again, this is a quick snapshot. I'll make sure these get sent to you or get included in the package so you guys have a full, and they'll be part of the minutes as well. Any questions? Big picture. Okay. Great. And you have them as, uh. Okay, perfect. Hey Dave, uh, next again, item review, or not review, but just uh comments, uh, not comments, uh, how do we, how do we write that?
Uh, well, just that we had your review meeting on Monday night.
Yep.
I think the meeting itself speaks for itself. It's hard to sort of summarize because there were five people and it went on for ninety minutes.
Mm hmm.
So I think it's. I don't know, we, we could summarize, but I, it probably, if we don't have to, I think the.
Fine with me. I think, I think we've got the goals, it'll be good.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
Did anybody? Did anybody else wanna?
I'll send you the package.
Yeah, I I just have a general comments. I think, you know, historically, the cap has never been involved with setting goals for the. General manager, okay? And I think in the spirit of how we've been engaging, I think it's, you know, at least speaking for myself and I think maybe for you guys. I, I think it's a good sign that, you know, we are being asked to participate. And I think, you know, so thank you. Uh, I think, you know. We were asked whether we would want to be participate in the previous review and it didn't make sense because. We had not been involved in setting the goals. I'm saying if we are involved now in setting goals, then we can provide our input also about reviews going forward. Thank you for including us. Um, yeah.
Great. So, um, in it, so it's on the screen, but also it was in the package and actually the first draft was, was shared with you guys back in December. Um, we kept the same, based on the discussion we had earlier, we kept the same structure, vision. Team personnel, customers, platform, funding and power supply. I'm given where we are right now, that structure. And it, it is um priority, we prioritize, we think properly, we could move power supply ahead of funding, but. The reason I had funding ahead of power supply is you need dollars to make sure you pay for everything. Um, uh, we, we made some refinements to it. Um, the vision. Um, I think the, the difference that we had, I shouldn't say difference, but no change from the twenty, um, uh. The December twenty twenty four piece on the vision and strategy. I'll just walk through the big picture and then you guys can comment on it. Um, the team and personnel, um, again, we focused on, again, some of the things we've talked about. Um, over the course of the past six months in particular, but you know, management team training, including me. Um, obviously, we have the union contracts are in process right now. And as we talked about um on Monday, but the, the uh product, productivity metrics. Um, whereas we are in uh growth mode, there's a question of how fast that growth is, but. Uh, we are building out networks, we are, are doing reliability work, et cetera. But the key and, but labor is, is the second largest item in our cost structure. It's a little bit over ten percent. And so. You know, for us is how do we e- in equip, uh, back to some comments and train. We do a good job on training, we do a good job on equipping, but you know, how do we, how do we work together to move those product, create the productivity metrics as a, as a set of metrics so that the whole team. Including the individuals who are actually doing, you know, turning the cranks, so to speak. Um, they have an idea of, of what the targets are, et cetera. Customers, we trimmed custom, we had, I think we had six items on customers. I trimmed it down to stay focused. I know the feedback you guys gave me last year was, it was ambitious. So on that, um, there are some pieces that are underlying this. Um, but cost of service and rate study for um by the end of this year, I did. Um, but cost of service and rate study for, um, by the end of this year, I did put, as you'll see in there. Um, Pam, for you and the rest of it, but you know, some, some quarterly targets when we want to get these things done by. Um, but the cost of service and rate study, it will be a pre, uh, prerequisite for doing. Twenty twenty-six uh, rates implementation, so that we've done by the fourth quarter. I'm on customers now, that's F. G is complete the customer satisfaction survey. We typically do this every three years, so doing that in twenty twenty-five is the right time. And again, we've had a theme, it's a constant theme because it's always challenging. Customer engagement, customer communication. We just talked a little bit before. Some of the comments from Megan and Sue relative to how we're gonna staff it, but how we continue to be a little more creative. We've done a lot of work with um, podcasts. We've done a lot of work with. Um, uh, we, we're engaged with social media. We haven't done a lot with social media, um, webinars, et cetera, but just how do you broaden, and then of course the partners. Chamber of Commerce and, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, you had really good success with webinars. I, I think, I think we, we kind of. Uh, had a break with that, but, you know, but each of these programs, solar, heat pumps, EVs.
Right.
Um, you know, when you've done them, you've had thirty, forty people uh, join. And. Afterwards. You know, so, so, yeah, so, yeah, more with that. I mean, you, you've got good partners with Adobe and Stepwise, so. Um, you know, getting them plugged into those. Um. If, uh, if, if there's a, a partner on residential solar that we can plug in there, I don't, I don't know who that is, but.
They're awesome, yeah.
You know, there, there might be, be someone who, who can fit that bill, but. Um. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's. That provides the, the content that, that people need to understand because they, they are complex.
They are.
You know, it is, they, they're not.
Oh, it's interesting, but oh my gosh.
Yeah.
I'll make it easier.
You know, and um, so, so to have. Um, those repeat, recycle, uh, and promote it on a, on a loop. Some interval, um, yeah, probably quarterly would be too much, but, but you know, at, at certain frequency.
On RCTV too.
Yeah.
They seem, you know. They're probably watching. They seem to have a lot of dead time. On RCTV, let me put it that way.
And, and what could be more exciting than heat pumps?
At least put something on it. They could, they could replay the webinar.
Yeah, that's true.
Because it's all, it's all.
It's not, it's not a crazy idea. At all. That's a great idea.
Once you, once you film it, you know, they should, they could just run the tape.
And, and they, yeah. They have the ability to do that, so that's a great idea.
They have, they have a lot of dead time. Um, and, and how many times I gotta watch Horn Pond? The guy who does the tour of Horn Pond. I think I've seen that five times.
I, I did a, uh, wasn't RCTV, but it did a CTV program where I was interviewed by the host and he talked about the. The house conversions that I made and the energy efficiency stuff. Um. If we want to review that again.
Love to, I mean.
And, and just talk about the conversions because I now have almost twelve years of. Of data of operations post-installation.
Here's.
Um, and, and as, I, as I think we know, if you go to heat pumps, you save total energy. Um, so, oh yeah, my electric bill went up. That was terrible. I, I, my last month was like five hundred dollars, but I would have had a seven hundred dollar fuel bill. So, um. You know, I, I can show or, or at least, it, it may be narrowing because now inflation and other energy costs have gone up, but. Relative to my baseline, I'm, I'm probably still showing savings.
So we are adding a customer, what a testimonial type of opponent to the webinar, so you are invited.
Alright, sign me up. I mean, I, I'll update my. I'll update my uh, so savings history uh, graphic.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna do your customer survey? How are you gonna do that?
Well, so.
Because, you know, I'm wondering if you just said, put it out there and, you know, people are not gonna pay attention to it. Is there any way to make some sort of incentive?
Um, guys, so we're actually gonna do a customer segmentation study first. Just to understand our customers better. Actually tomorrow morning, I'm talking to a, a potential organization that does the survey for years and years.
Yeah.
Um. And then based on that, then, so this organization, they actually use a, a professional surveyor. So we could do that segmentation study first, and then we could also use that same surveyor to develop a, you know, more effective.
What's the incentive for the customer to participate in the survey?
I'm not the expert, I don't know, but.
I think what, what, what Ray has suggested.
If, if you go on this or you do the survey, you get a free don't.
You got a free don't, yeah, again.
So, bring the one hour, is that what?
I don't know, maybe the five dollar discount on your bill or something, you know?
Your light bulb?
No, 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 but, but the idea is actually good in terms of thinking about what we might do to create incentive for more participation.
Yeah, quite often you get into a pool where you draw one lucky person.
Well, we have done that in the past, and we might do that, but I think, you know, one of the things that, because the last time we did it, um, Dave was. Was involved in terms of us doing some of the questions, et cetera, and we, we worked hard to cover the whole broad spectrum. Um, so what Megan's gonna try and do is, is be more comprehensive in terms of the broader spectrum because. Depending upon whether it was phone or written or email, it by definite, by definition, it's. We're trying to normalize that, but I think the suggestion of some incentive is actually a good one.
Some incentive, yeah, because, you know, you know, I, I get surveys all the time. They come through my email. I'm like, okay, forget that, you know?
If there's, if there's.
You know, how many, every time I buy something, I know what the experience was, you know?
So.
Great, can I, could I make a, a suggestion on, um, one of the, the customer engagement goals? Um.
Please.
Uh, on the, on the RMLD dot com and, and other communication, I think we do need. A more near-term goal, something maybe in Q one regarding, you know, kind of a thorough review of. All of the kind of study customer touchpoints, whether it's the invoice language, um, that customers get every month or. What's on the website in terms of current programs, just to make sure we're. Very, very sure that the information customers are getting, that we're pushing out to them is correct. Um, so if we could, if you, if we could add something specific around that in addition to what you already have, I think that would be a, a good add.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I agree with that suggestion.
Create an H one, okay?
H one.
No, I'll, I'll.
I, I said Q one, but.
Sorry.
So.
Um, we'll put Q one next to it, but H one, if you look on it, there's um, FGH, and so there'll be, there'll be a new H.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant like first half of the year, H one, so, gotcha, gotcha.
I will provide the context for this though, so we are actually, we've already started doing this. We updated quite a few pages already. And we have to do this before we actually can migrate the current website to the new website. So, Q one.
It's perfect. It'll be achievable then. I, I just want to make sure that we, we know that we're doing it. Um, quickly and, and that we're being responsive to some of the questions that have been raised.
Great suggestion.
One, one, one other item that, that you have is always an explanation of what your bill is. And, you know, on both IOU websites, there's a pretty easy to navigate to bill explanation. Right? So you can see what your charges are. And I think if you have an explanation of what your charges are, um, then. People can obviously go into the next step like, well, what can I do to reduce a charge? Right? You have a distribution charge, you have a transmission charge. So there, and they have little, you know, links to YouTube videos. That, that you could possibly see. And, and they just explain what each element of, of the distribution and or um, transmission. Charge is. They don't have to be extensive, they're just high-level graphics, but um. If you're looking to get more participation in a program, then you could see what that. That the impact that would be on your bill. So I, we don't, we don't have anything like that either, but that, it's something potentially that, that we can do.
We have a page, but we're updating that one. Um.
So. Nope, it's good. So Bob, we, we do, I think the suggestion you have is to add explanations. We do have a detailed page. It's got a lot of pretty colors on it. We're, but we put it together. Two years ago. So back to Pam's request of making sure it's current, an update with, with current examples. And then your suggestion to add to that, which is, um. Things that you might be able to do to folk, to reduce that por- portion of the bill. I think that's a great.
That's a great suggestion.
It's really good.
Great, great. And another one could be, how many customers are getting communications for, for, I don't know what the metric would be, but it could be how many are enrolled in. Constant contact and getting the peak. I don't know, how many uh, people get that now?
Uh, over two thousand.
Two thousand, okay. So there was thirty, thirty thousand meters.
Yep.
So there's obviously room for growth in people who receive the emails with the Pika warnings, you know, assuming they're going out. So I think setting a goal of greatly increasing that number because we know how much impact it has when people do act on the peak. So I don't know what the metric would be, but to put some kind of numerical goal for. Putting some effort into increasing. It could be the number of people getting those emails. It could be other things. I'm not sure what those things would be, but. Um, but especially the emails.
So in terms of goal changes, um, I've got Pam's H one goal. Um. Um, and tied to that is adding the explanation that Bob just mentioned. Um, I'll probably have to do a little bit more exploration in terms of how to change the email contact piece. I'm hundred percent with you in terms of our goal is to get, um, is to reach out to more of our customers in whatever medium. Um, I don't, I don't want to put a specific.
I understand, but, but I understand it, 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 it's easy to say and harder to do. Nevertheless, if there's not a goal, then okay, maybe you fall short of the goal, but at least we're trying to go beyond two thousand when there's thirty thousand meters. Um, so that's all.
Yep.
And then it could mean using committees and whatever to, you know, kind of. Put the word out a little more aggressively. Hey, please sign up for this. Please sign up. This is why it's important. And, yeah, now you have two new positions who, that would be, could be part of what they're, what they're up to between now and especially.
We'll try and draft a H two suggestion of what that might look like.
Like, think about what that would be, so maybe we can't figure it out in the next fifteen minutes, but.
Uh, we'll, we'll put our heads together and think of something very good.
And then, this, this is not, well, maybe it is on customer, but I know there's at some point, there's a rate, a rate increase coming at some point. I don't know what month you're thinking that's gonna be.
Uh, our intention is to review it with you guys all next week, uh, next month, and then actually implement it April first.
Okay. So, and we talked about, lived this on Monday night, is that although I know AMI will enable all kinds of things. There are ways, and the TOU rates have been pretty. Antiquated now, the same TOU formula has been in place for what, ten, fifteen, twenty years, something like that.
Yep.
The same, I, I enrolled, I guess, fifteen years ago or ten years ago. Nothing's changed in it. It goes up a little bit. I think the delta between off and on is pretty small. And then we know that the hours are not the same hours that we're actually experiencing the peak. We know we have AMI data from industrial customers right now. There's a lot of things that could be done, so why not get something done in this rate increase?
I know, so that's part of the plan, actually, Dave, when we, when we lay it out, um. We're, so that's why we're gonna do it in February.
Right.
There'll be some additions to the TOU. It won't be full comprehensive, but just some.
So maybe you just add that to F. Yeah, with a, with a full review of the time of use rate.
But more than a review, like, let's come in with some.
Well.
Options for us to look at.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but options on, okay.
No, no, well.
What do you want to word it?
Um, you don't want to add another H again?
I, I think it's more, it falls in, it falls in the cost. It falls in the.
I guess the point is, we've talked about it for years of the need to change, both to more aggressively promote the rate, but also to make the rate more aligned with. When the peak actually is, right? And to make, maybe make it the incentive a little stronger than it is now. So it should be possible to do things between now and when.
So, I'll create an F one, we're adding goals now, an F one, and we'll make it, um. No later than the second half, so the second quarter of twenty twenty-five, but to enhance the time of use. Um, rate structure. I'll put something along those lines. Uh, I'll just share with you. We're gonna do this when we present it to you in February, so. Um, I'll be happy to add it and we'll get a checkmark for it.
Right, good checkmark.
So you're already, you were already planning to do something?
Already planned.
Okay, alright, because I, when I talk to you, it wasn't clear that you were gonna do, I thought it was across the board, you were gonna.
No, 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 it's not, it's not across the board and, yeah, so, it, it's, the, none of the rates, there's. It's not across the board, bottom line. So I can either add it or not, but we're gonna talk about it in four weeks.
Okay.
Do you want to add it or not? I don't care, I'm neutral.
I, I want to add one more.
Wait, 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 before you add one more, please. Okay, remember, your feedback last year was too ambitious, so I'm just trying to be careful.
This is more, more about adding specificity, I think, and that's all, but also not being unrealistic. We don't want to be unrealistic.
I, I do want a. Clarification.
Yeah.
For the, uh, F. So we plan to do that. We want to do the overhaul.
Yeah.
And then one consideration is if we change rates too frequently, the customers might not like it. So I, 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 I definitely want to have that rate discussion maybe next month. But I'd like to have a conversation about when we actually implement something without disrupting customers.
I understand, we don't want to make it too crazy. Uh, that makes sense.
Okay. So the February thing will be our normal. Um, annual adjustment. It'll make some fine-tune adjustments to the TOU.
Okay.
And then as Meg, Megan mentioned, right? F is a much more comprehensive piece, and that, and that will also correspond to, as we talked about before. Um, MDM and AMI we implemented in twenty twenty-six, when we could do a much more comprehensive piece. And, and just to tie into it, you know, Vivek has been, um. Well, you know, appropriately persistent in terms of lessons from other people. So part of our goal. With the AMI project is to take lessons from people that have already done the AMI. What's worked, what hasn't worked, right? And what lessons can we learn? So that's all part of, of that, yeah. Um, I'll create an F one underneath it for the refinement of the TOU rate. Okay, Vivek, you have another one.
So, coming back to energy efficiency. So, like you said, if you measure it, you, you're gonna track it, right? So I think, help, help, help decide where would you park an energy efficiency goal? Because, and it's not clear as to, you know, you want to reduce the load or you want to make load shifting. I, I think what you really need to do is think about how other organizations. Across the country are basically trying to set goals for energy efficiency for a utility. Okay, so I think that the task is defining a metric that's appropriate for RMLD. So I think that would be a good goal, and then you can work towards a number because. I, I could say, you could say, you know, you, you could say that, you know, you want to reduce resident or, you know. The energy load by five percent over five years, but that's not necessarily a good goal. I mean, it should be, be a much more sophisticated goal. So, so figure out what's a good way to set a goal.
So let me play back, I think, on that one, Vivek. So, um, so over the course of the year, right, I'm gonna make this a twenty twenty-five goal. But define an efficiency metric. Um, create some targets, so a metric, which would be, you know, is it kilowatt hours per household, kilowatt hour, it's whatever the metric happens to be. Or maybe it's dollars, um, in some form, and then creates, then so create the metric that makes sense. All of this, so create a metric, um, establish some targets and the timing of the targets. And under, and overlying all of that is, um, actively research lessons from other utilities. Other vendors in terms of what they've done and put that into the definition of the metric and the targets.
Because there's an energy reduction and there's a time shifting element, right? So it's both, it's energy reduction and cost reduction, right? So I think that is the balance, that's a, a, a good way to look at it, but I, I, I don't want to be prescriptive, I'm just saying, you know.
I'll, I'll, I'll add that and we'll make it no later than Q four twenty twenty-five.
And, and what, where would you park it?
Uh, we're gonna park it under customer. We'll make it, I right now have a H three, so we'll shut everything down, but we'll call it H three.
Okay.
So we've got an F one, we've got an H one, we've got the H three. Um. Going once, going twice.
Those old PS. Um, I mean, I don't know whether this is a goal, but it's, it's been consistent feedback is about. The, the, the fact that the plan over time has been really going up a lot and it doubled from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. With line OT on planned OT going from four sixty to like a million dollars, a million dollars. Um, in, in two years since you, since you became GM. So I think, I don't, how to make that a goal of like, we've given feedback across the year about this and we did again Monday of. How do we say, look, it's, this has to be. This has to be corrected, and when does that happen? And I don't know, it doesn't have to be necessarily built into union negotiations just because it's a, it's a management, you know, it's, it's things that you implemented as general manager that. That led to a lot of this. So how do we fold that into a goal so that it gets, you know, the costs are not so high as they've been?
I understand the question, um, and I.
And I don't know that we have an answer tonight, or.
We we we, uh no, that that's a, that's a much broader question, and you know, we spent some time in a session talking about that. It really ties into item E above, um productivity metrics, um. And and ultimately, it it ties into how we started the um review, which is. You know, how are we doing against reliability, low cost and compliance? And.
Okay.
I so I I I hear all the comments, and I think as we talked about, um that. Our focus is total labor cost as opposed to one component. And so, that, there's a lot of things that were, again, I'm just very careful what I, so. I hear you. Please, yeah, 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 so I'm 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 gonna, I'm gonna link it to E, and we can, we can review it. Um, at different points over the course of the year, particularly after we get the contract done. Um, but there is a goal associated with how do we better manage total labor cost, and and OT is one component of it.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the statement that it's. It's a result of reli- reliability is 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 this, that these numbers I just quoted are, have to do with reliability. I don't think that's really, uh I don't think that's supported by the data.
Actually, it is, and that's and that's the data we we presented earlier.
It is true that we have pilot reliability, and that we always have.
No, 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 I think what we said is between twenty three and twenty four, our reliability was twice as good. Alright, so, but the point's well taken, right? How do we manage total labor cost, um again, ties into how do we best utilize the resources that we have, and the ones that we subcontract, and how we use overtime, all parts of it. Message received.
Um, so there's there's good news about tonight's meeting, by the way, which is that we do not need the executive session.
No.
Greg earlier today, we we ended up covering what we needed to cover on Monday night.
I guess I'll have to wander the streets now.
So, whereas we we we, you know, we did a three hour meeting uh Monday, and we probably can be out of here pretty quickly.
Yep.
Um, so that's the good, and I and I think given there's been a lot of little things that have come up in the last fifteen minutes, that maybe it's worth. We we maybe we just, and and plus, the the follow up on Monday might, it it wouldn't be ready tonight, but maybe sooner than the next meeting, we have a quick one. That can be digest, you go back and digest the things that were said.
Yeah.
Rushing and doing it right this minute.
Yep.
And we have a quick meeting in two weeks or something, so. Uh, and then if there's an ES piece that we can follow, then it's quite a quick thing, like a nine, you know. Forty five minute meeting, you know, so if 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 we can put something on the books for two weeks from now. And if that's okay with that, that alright with everybody, for that.
Uh, let let me have Erica reach out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
She's taking care of some stuff.
Define, define what's gonna be discussed at that meeting, so.
Well, we just had, we just had a half a dozen things mentioned to.
The focus is, you guys need to finalize the goal.
We've had a couple of exchanges now, we just want to wrap it up.
Wasn't sure what how was defined.
That that is the definition, okay.
Okay, and it could be super sweet, because I will, I will get that out.
I mean, is this, is this not something that we could have a a like a follow up revision of the. The document that was sent, and if we need to discuss it, then we call a meeting, I I feel like our input was pretty clear today, do we, do we need to talk about it again?
Yeah, Pam, my my goal is to take this and then just update this draft, um and circulate it back to you guys, and I'll include the cab as well, but it's the. Us, the board and the GM have to, um.
Okay, to your point, Pam, we we may not need it, I certainly don't want to have more meetings, but the sake of having meetings. I just thought if we want to put a placeholder in case it's needed, and again, it could be a, it could be a forty five minute Zoom meeting in case we need to look at this as a group. Because we can't, uh, we can't in email, you can back and forth with each other, and it.
Yeah, understood, if we want to vote and all that, yeah, got it, okay.
So that's all, uh uh again, something quick, and knowing that we're out of here at seven thirty tonight, and not eight or nine or ten, so. Um, I I think it would be worth just putting a placeholder date, if we can just pick one, and we may not need it. For like two weeks from now.
Uh, two weeks from now is the week of the tenth. Um, could we do the evening of the twelfth or the evening of the thirteenth?
I can.
So sorry, I missed this, what's this?
Only because we have a bunch of things we're talking about, just to give them a chance to go back, if we needed a meeting.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna edit the goals and recirculate to you guys, and we need basically to, so technically, Vivek, you guys have provided input, but I want you to see it. And then the board and I, we have to, they have to vote to approve the proposal.
The eleventh and the twelfth is fine with me, so. And it's gotta be at night, can't be during the day, not during the day, sorry.
I I can do the Wednesday. The the twelfth, I can't do Thursday.
It's just a commissioner meeting for approval?
Probably, yeah, look at it as a group.
Yeah, we may, we may not need it either.
We may, we may not need it.
If the draft comes out, we're we're okay with it.
Right, but we can't vote on email, you know, we can't.
Well, worst worst case, we voted, I mean, I'll send it to you, and we can talk about it, um. Either we can leave, because we, the next meeting we have scheduled right now, we can either do it um the twelfth, so we'll just, we'll pencil in the twelfth, it'll be half hour meeting.
Yep.
And then, um.
We'll have any of having a full agenda on the twenty sixth.
Full agendas.
It'll be a full agenda, but let's do the twelfth, we, what what time, six or seven? Seven.
Six.
Six, one once, one twice, six, okay, that's a, that's a placeholder.
Placeholder.
Person or Zoom?
Uh, it could be either way, you assume Zoom, but.
It'll be happening to be.
It's a Zoom Zoom and.
Zoom Zoom, yeah.
If not, we'll just. We can always.
Yeah, I mean, we just.
Get the conference room and then.
Yeah.
Okay, well, is a placeholder if we need it.
Right. There's a lot of things going on, it's it, as you say, it's things, the utility is more. Complex than it used to be. Mostly. Our meetings are not.
Okay.
So you've had one more meeting to my turn, my turn.
Well, you know.
Now I got three. Double my staple, yes.
All right, are we done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Art contesting.
Oh, does he have a question? I didn't see, I, do you have a question? Where, is that on screen?
There's two dates of the um, the grade four art contest, proposed dates.
Oh, they're right here, I'm sorry, they're in the motion, so uh March, thank you for the reminder, um scheduling, so Tuesday, March twenty fifth, or Tuesday, March eleventh. Is there, so we, this is what we do every year, and um, uh, this is the high school art contest.
Is this the high school one?
No, it's elementary, sorry.
Is this elementary or is it high school?
Okay, thank you, it's elementary, and they're posted in the in the board, so.
Okay.
We'd love to have, um ideally, two of the commissioners join us if at all possible.
I mean.
You're in.
I mean.
You said the eleventh or the twenty fifth?
Correct.
Is it both nights or one night?
It was a one night, yeah, we're gonna go back to one.
Four towns, wow.
Yeah.
Should we split it between two?
Well, we've played both.
Yeah, what, what?
Yeah, both of those are okay for me, so I I I can be one of the participants, um I also attended last year, so. If somebody else wants to turn, totally fine with that too.
Yes, I um also uh was, I I I'm available both of those nights, so whichever. Whichever one you want, yeah, that was a great, great event.
It is a great event, I'll have Erica tomorrow, uh just close the loop, and if there's three of us, that's totally fine, because it's a big group.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's not a meeting, it's an award ceremony, so don't worry about the court. All right.
Are we good?
First to adjourn?
Seven thirty, all right.
So.
We'll get the RMLD citizens advisory board adjourned regular session.
In what second? Two more time.
The RMLD board of commissioners adjourned the regular session, I heard Ray sign his second already.
I did, you heard me correct.
I I heard everybody vote in favor.
Great boarder eye.
Thanks, everybody, bye. Good night.